All right. If you could please take your seats. If you could please take your seats, we're going to start this meeting.
Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. As a part of this is a special meeting. Today's date, August 7th. I would like to do the roll call of commission members. Commissioner Jekowicz. Could you turn on the microphones, please? The microphones for. Thank you. Commissioner Jekowicz. Is the mic still not working? Yep.
They're working on it.
Oh, they work.
It should be on green.
These guys? They're good? Okay. Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Poncze.
Present.
Commissioner Rubin. Commissioner Tolliver. Thank you. I am Commissioner Wong. We do have a quorum. If we can get the mics working in that second row back there. I'd like to ask anyone wishing to make a statement on today's agenda to complete a public comment card. They look like this. Give the card to a member of the staff. Comment cards are available at the door. As a courtesy to other individuals wishing to offer your comments, we ask that members of the general public, limit your statements to three minutes or less. When the time comes for public comment on the individual item on the agenda, I'll call the names from the cards and ask you to come forward to the microphone to make your statement. Please state your name and interest, organization, or company you represent, if any. First item on the agenda is the preliminary preliminary landmark recommendation for St. Adelbert Parish Complex. This is located at 1622 to 1658 West 17th Street and 1633 to 1659 West 16th Street in the 25th Ward. I do want to make note that the Special Landmarks Commission meeting today is due to work initiated by the Archdiocese last week to remove stained glass windows from the former St. Adelbert Parish Complex in Pilsen. The meeting will consider preliminary landmark recommendation for the vacant complex, including the former church, rectory, convent, and school. A preliminary recommendation is the first step in the landmark process and provides the same protections as the final step, which is a formal landmark designation by city council. Preliminary recommendations also require permits to be issued by the Department of Buildings for certain work that is currently allowed without a permit, such as removal or board up of windows. In recent years, DPD has acknowledged its intent to initiate a landmark designation for the complex in conjunction with the sale and redevelopment plan that may emerge in the future. City staff have meanwhile maintained communications with our stices about ongoing maintenance and security needs along with communities' needs needs to be informed in advance of any changes to the structure. Given the work that was initiated this week without notice, a preliminary recommendation is moving forward to help ensure the building's significant features are preserved. All permit applications for pending or approved landmarks require review by the Landmarks Commission staff before being issued by Department of Buildings. The significant features in the preliminary recommendation will focus on the building's exterior elevations, which will preserve St. Adelbert's overall presence in the community while also enabling its reuse for future development for a future redevelopment project. A designation would also make the entire Adelbert campus eligible for city and federal landmark incentives to assist with preservation and restoration needs, including adopt a landmark grants and permit fee waivers, among others. Dan Kleiber, if you could give us a report, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me okay? For your consideration today is a preliminary landmark recommendation for the St. Adelbert Parish Complex located in the Lower West Side Community Area, Pilsen Neighborhood, and 25th Ward. For orientation, the St. Adelbert Parish Complex consists of four buildings on a campus bounded on a city block between Marshfield on the east, Palina on the west, 17th Street on the south, and 16th Street on the north. Specifically, the proposed landmark designation includes the four primary buildings on the campus. The church is right in the middle at 1636 to 40 West 17th Street, as represented by the red star. And just to the west of the church is the rectory at 1646 to 50 West 17th Street, as represented by the blue star. To the east is the convent at 1626 through 30 West 17th Street, which is the yellow star. And then the school is at 1641 West 16th Street to the north at the green star. And commissioners, right here, a small detail to point out. Please note, there is one small change in the resolution before you now, and that is that there is only one building on the campus that will be excluded from the significant features, and that is this one-story accessory garage located north of the rectory. Staff recommends that the St. Adelbert Complex meets four criteria for Chicago landmark designation, including criterion one for heritage. The St. Adelbert Complex is located in Pilsen, a neighborhood within Chicago's Lower West Side Community Area. This area near the South Branch of the Chicago River began to develop when nearby infrastructure projects proved transformative for the Lower West Side. Construction of the Illinois and Michigan Canal, the southwestern Plank Road, and the Burlington Railway drew in workers, primarily Irish and German immigrants at first, who settled in the area and began building homes and businesses. By the 1850s, the transportation connectivity of the area, along with abundant affordable land, made the area particularly well-suited as an industrial, manufacturing, and distribution hub. Lumberyards, factories, grain elevators, stockyards, and breweries soon sprouted up near the Chicago River, bringing with them a great number of jobs. Chicago's population was growing exponentially in the late 1800s, and as waves of European immigrants flooded the city looking for work, many of them found it on the Lower West Side. In particular, Bohemian immigrants from the modern-day Czechia and Slovak Republic formed a community in the area and established homes and businesses, including a restaurant called "At the City of Pills", which gave the new neighborhood its now Anglo side's name of Pilsen. Around this time, Chicago began experiencing what would become a decades-long wave of immigration of ethnic Poles. Although initially.
If the audience could please hold their applause.
Although initially, Chicago's polonia was concentrated on the Northwest Side, the population soon spread to other areas of the city, largely in pursuit of the industrial employment. Due to its abundance of such jobs, Pilsen had by the 1870s its own well-established Polish enclave. Through Chicago's polonia had successfully formed two of their own Roman Catholic parishes by 1872. Both were located several miles away from the rapidly growing Polish community in Pilsen, who desired their own local church. As such, with the help of Bishop Thomas Foley, a new parish dedicated to St. Adelbert of Prague was founded in Pilsen in 1874. Typical of many congregations, the parish did not have many resources in the beginning, and it spent its first years worshiping in an unfinished substructure with a temporary roof and altar until they were able to erect a proper church and school building in 1884 along the east side of Palina Street between 16th and 17th Streets. In 1904, Reverend Kazimir Gronkowski was appointed pastor of the growing congregation. Born in Poland in 1873, Gronkowski immigrated to the United States at age 20 to study theology. He was ordained as a priest in 1897 and moved to Chicago initially serving as pastor of a different church before coming to St. Adelbert. He grew to be very well-regarded and respected by the parish and greater Chicago Catholic community and remained at St. Adelbert for over 50 years until his death in 1957. During that time, he led much of the parish's early growth and years of prosperity. Dedicated to improving the church facilities, Gronkowski hired renowned and eclas- eclas-elastical architect Henry J. Schlocks to design a grand church. The cornerstone for the new church was laid in 1912 with much fanfare, including a celebratory parade around the neighborhood and a ceremony presided over by Archbishop Quigley. The new church and its adjoining rectory were completed in 1914 and dedicated on September 20th. At that time, another parade and an elaborate ceremony were held, with a reported 50,000 people in attendance at the event. St. Adelbert's majestic majestic new home seemed suitable for such a thriving parish, which established itself as the center of Polish-American life and culture in Pilsen for many decades. In addition to its regularly religious services, the church provided social, educational, and recreational opportunities for its congregants who formed a multitude of clubs and organizations through the years. In addition, the church also frequently hosted visiting Polish dignitaries and invited the public to many cultural events, such as the Polish Week of Hospitality that was part of the 1933 Century of Progress World's Fair. The parish was an anchor for multiple waves of Polish immigrants and eventually their American-born children and grandchildren. At its peak, the parish had a membership of around 4,000 families, with over 2,000 students enrolled at St. Adelbert's School. In 1928, a three-story convent was constructed to the east of the church that could house up to 52 women religiously. The convent would be the final building of the parish. By the mid 20th century, the polonia in Pilsen had shifted from an immigrant community to mostly second and third-generation Polish Americans, who were more financially and culturally well-established than their predecessors. Though this new polonia still had ties to their heritage, the community gradually began dispersing. This outmigration increased in the years following World War II. At the same time, Mexican immigrants began moving to Pilsen, drawn to its affordable housing and job opportunities. As these new residents were Roman Catholic, many were also drawn to join the St. Adelbert Parish and continue the traditions of community, family, and faith. Indeed, like the immigrants that preceded them, Pilsens Mexican-American residents possessed a strong sense of cultural pride. In celebration of Mexican heritage, history, culture, and language, neighborhood leaders initiated festivals and celebrations of Mexican food, art, and culture throughout the decades. However, the addition of these new Mexican parishioners was vastly outpaced by the mass outmigration of the local Polish community. And by the 1970s, the congregation at St. Adelbert's had shrunk to 600 families, with only 200 students enrolled at its school, and extensive repairs needed to keep the complex functional. In 1974, the Archdiocese of Chicago announced plans to close St. Adelbert and merge the parish with a nearby parish. Though the St. Adelbert congregation had not been exempt from stress related to the cultural changes in the community, the planned closure of the parish unified European and Latino community members. Through protests and letter-writing campaigns, the parish community pleaded with officials to spare their parish and rallied to raise funds for renovations. After successfully fending off closure of their church, St. Adelbert began taking steps to formally recognize the Mexican heritage of its parishioners. The church initiated a weekly Spanish-language mass and dedicated a new shrine to Our Lady of San Juan de los Legos. St. Adelbert was also one of eight neighborhood parishes that brought the Mexican tradition of Via Crucis to Pilsen. This elaborate reenactment of the Way of the Cross, culminating with a procession down city streets, has drawn crowds to Pilsen every Good Friday since 1977. The number of parishioners at St. Adelbert continued to wane into the 21st century, and in 2016, the Archdiocese of Chicago once again announced that the St. Adelbert Church would be closed. The final mass in St. Adelbert Church was celebrated on July 14th, 2019, and was conducted in English, Polish, and Spanish. In addition to heritage, we believe that St. Adelbert Complex meets criterion four for architecture. The crown jewel of the St. Adelbert Complex is its Henry J. Schlock's designed church. The church's distinctive south-facing front facade is dominated by 185 feet-high symmetrical bell towers. Each features frosted-glass clocks, two bracketed cornices supporting decorative arcaded openings, and four pediments below a copper cupola crowned by a cross. These towers flank either side of the central portion of the building, which has a grand portico entryway with seven doorways evenly spaced between eight smooth columns with Corinthian capitals. The columns support a stone architrave, which is topped by a row of arcaded clear-story windows. Above this, the facade is set back slightly so it is flush with the lower entryway's exterior wall, with a prominent rose window with stone detailing that is centered between four Corinthian pilasters and capped with a bracketed cornice and ornate pediment with a carved medallion depicting the Virgin Mary and Jesus Christ. This main facade is primarily constructed of cream-colored pressed brick with cream and rose-colored granite, limestone, and terracotta details throughout. The remaining elevations of the church are clearly intended as secondary facades. They have relatively few details apart from some stone arcade windows. The cream-colored brick continues throughout the exterior on all. The cream-colored brick continues throughout the exterior on all elevations. The Saint Edelberg Rectory was constructed in conjunction with the adjacent church building and as such was designed by Schlocks in a complimentary, simplified Renaissance Revival style. It is a three-story building with a raised basement, all clad in the same cream and rose-colored pressed brick, granite, limestone, and terracotta as the church building. The most notable feature of the south-facing primary facade is its pedimented entry, which is supported by bracketed columns with matching stone pilasters on the exterior wall. A stone balustrade staircase connects this raised first-floor entrance to the sidewalk. The roof is flat with simple terracotta coping with a decorative terracotta belt course below. Similar terracotta blocks surround all the front facade windows, with some split by engaged columns with Corinthian capitals. The remaining elevations of the rectory are clearly intended as secondary facades, the only notable details being terracotta lintels and two small, open porches connected to the first floor, one on the east facade and one on the north, both with copper roofs. The cream-colored brick continues throughout the exterior on all elevations. The Saint Edelberg Convent Building was constructed in 1928 to house the nuns of the parish who operated the parish school. It was designed by architect Paul N. Duca in a simple interpretation of the Renaissance Revival style, which blends harmoniously with the existing church and rectory to its west. It is a three-story building with a raised basement. Like its adjacent parish buildings, it is clad in cream-colored pressed brick with cream terracotta details. The massing of the building is articulated by slightly recessed sections on either end and an additional, more deeply recessed section at the far west of the building. The south-facing primary facade has a raised first-floor entrance with decorative terracotta molding surrounding the doorways. Just above the first floor, there is an ornamental terracotta cornice that runs across the central section of the building, while above the third floor, there is a larger dental terracotta cornice that spans all the way across the first recessed sections on both sides. The roof is flat with a very simple terracotta cornice and diamond pattern overall. The rectangular windows on all floors are symmetrical and have simple terracotta sills and flat masonry arches. The five windows on the second floor of the central section of the building are unique in that they are comprised of rectangular panes of colorful arched glass and round panes depicting religious symbology. These second-floor windows are surrounded by round masonry arches with masonry spandrels and keystones, with the center window featuring a cross medallion in place of the standard keystone. The deeply recessed section at the far west end of the building has an additional entrance that is situated mid-level between the basement and first floor. This entryway has a simple curved pediment and brackets, both made of wood. A seemingly identical entryway is also present on the east side of the building. The remaining elevations of the school are clearly intended as secondary facades. They have little detailing apart from some minor continuation of the ornamental cornice and masonry from the third floor of the front facade. Apologize, that was the convent. Rounding out the complex, the Saint Edelberg School Building was constructed in 1908 as an unattached expansion of a then-adjacent school building that is no longer extant. The architect-designer of this existing school building is unknown. It is a three-story building with a north-facing primary facade clad in red pressed brick with yellow pressed brick ornamentation. The far east and west ends of the first floor each have a slightly raised limestone entryway topped with scrolled corbels and a stone-crossed finial. All three floors have simple symmetrical rows of windows with limestone sills. The massing of the building is articulated by two slightly recessed sections on either end. The remaining elevations of the school are clearly intended as secondary facades. They have little to no detailing and are clad in common brick. We also believe that Saint Edelberg meets criterion five as the work of a significant architect. Architect Henry John Schlocks was born in Chicago in 1868. He studied architecture at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology and trained as a drafting apprentice at the renowned Chicago architectural firm of Adler &amp; Sullivan before traveling Europe, studying different styles of religious architecture across the continent. Upon his return to Chicago in 1891, Schlocks started an architectural firm with Henry Ottenheimer, a former coworker from Adler &amp; Sullivan. Though in their early years, Schlocks and Ottenheimer designed all manner of buildings, from small-scale residences to sprawling industrial complexes, Schlocks soon found his niche designing Catholic churches and their associated parish buildings, as well as schools, hospitals, and residences. Schlocks also taught at Notre Dame University, where he is credited as one of the founders of that school's architecture program. By 1897, Schlocks had established himself as a specialist of Catholic architecture and left his firm to practice independently. In terms of individually designated Chicago landmarks, Schlocks was the architect for Saint Chalasius Church, originally Saint Clara, at 6401 South Woodlawn. Although Schlocks is most well-known in Chicago for his ecclesiastical buildings for the Archdiocese of Chicago, his body of work also includes secular buildings and other churches throughout the country. At least three of Schlocks's buildings are individually listed in the National Register of Historic Places: the Curtis Wright Aeronautical University Building in Chicago, Illinois, Denver and Rio Grande Western Railroad Depot in Grand Junction, Colorado, and Denver and Rio Grande Railroad Station in Salt Lake City, Utah, with countless others listed as contributing to National Register Historic Districts. Finally, staff believe Saint Edelberg is a unique visual feature in the city of Chicago. The Saint Edelberg complex encompasses half of a city block and includes a large-scale Renaissance Revival church with two 185-foot towers surrounded by low-scale residential and commercial buildings. It has been a prominent and familiar visual feature of the Pilsen neighborhood for over a century. In addition to the landmark criteria, we recommend that Saint Edelberg also meets the separate integrity criterion. The Saint Edelberg complex possesses sufficient integrity to convey its historic architectural and cultural significance. The existing buildings of the Saint Edelberg complex remain in their original location and their setting within a low-rise residential neighborhood has stayed remarkably similar given their age. Despite having undergone some minor alterations and deterioration typical for buildings of this age, the buildings of the Saint Edelberg complex have largely retained their original character-defining exterior features, materials, and overall design, and therefore sufficiently convey their historic significance. Again, the building is located in the 25th Ward, and Alderman Byron Sichio Lopez has indicated his support for the designation. We recommend that the significant historical and architectural features...
Would you please let him finish?
We recommend that the significant historical and architectural features of the building be preliminarily identified as all exterior elevations, including roof lines of the four buildings that make up the Saint Edelberg complex: the church, rectory, convent, and school buildings. Building interiors are excluded from the significant features. In addition, the single-story accessory building located north of the rectory is also excluded from the significant features. For the purposes of Section 2120-740 of the Municipal Code of Chicago governing the review of permit applications, the following additional guidelines shall also apply. "The commission's review of proposed work should ensure that the significant historic and architectural features of the exteriors and roof lines of the four buildings are preserved while allowing reasonable change and flexibility to meet new needs in accommodating future uses, including potential new construction on undeveloped portions of the parcel." You have a preliminary recommendation to that effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, does the commission have any questions for Dan after this? Commissioner Burns?
Since the mic isn't on, maybe Dan, you could repeat my question after I ask you? There we go. Thank you. I'm curious about the status of the glass from the rose-glass window. Chairman Wong talked about it being removed last week. Has it been removed in its entirety? And on a related note, if you all know that, how does that affect the status of the glass that's been removed if we move forward with the preliminary recommendation?
Thanks, Commissioner Burns. Matt Crawford, staff for the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm a historian that worked with Dan on this landmark designation. We don't know. We do know that, uh, the Archdiocese set about to remove stained glass from the sanctuary of the building. I believe a representative of the Archdiocese is here who could speak to the extent of how much has been removed. There's nothing in the landmark's ordinance which would allow the commission to compel the diocese to put stained glass windows back into the church. And that would also raise legal questions about the separation of church and state. Because stained glass is, um, liturgical art, part of the Catholic Church's worship practice.
Thank you.
And also, before we continue, actually, I'd like to acknowledge that Commissioner Hughes is also here and has joined the commission. Any other questions for, uh, Dan? Having none, I'd like to acknowledge that the Archdiocese is here and, uh, does not want to make a comment at this time. Alderman Sichio Lopez is here. If you'd like to make a statement, you want to do it from there or do you want to go up front?
Thank you. Um, and good afternoon, everyone. Buenas tardes. Día de Navidad. Vite me. Thank you. Thank you first and foremost to the Landmark Commission for considering this agenda as a special item. I also want to thank Mayor Johnson for fulfilling a commitment to work collaboratively with every institution in the city of Chicago, including the Archdiocese, so that we can achieve the goals that are so important for the city in such a dire time. Also, we'd like to thank Commissioner Dom Polgorzewski, who is also, I believe, here in the audience. So, Commissioner... To all the 25th Ward stakeholders who are here today, constituents of the 25th Ward or not, you are residents of the city of Chicago. If you are a Polish resident or you are a Mexican constituent, you deserve the same dignity and respect and the same consideration when it comes to treating landmark. We're here today because we promise a different approach to government. I'm so glad and proud to see this room filled with people. That is the soul of the city of Chicago. And on behalf of the 25th Ward, our message is a message of unity. Our message is a message of collaboration. And our message is a message to protect and respect the heritage of every community in the city of Chicago. We ought to make sure that we fall on example so our children can be proud. We recognize the historic significance of Saint Edelberg, but we also recognize the social significance of a community, an immigrant port of entry, that has always been respectful to every community that has come before us. There's no mistake that our community, the Pilsen community, is a welcoming port of entry that continues to be a port of entry during the most difficult times. And as such, we are proud to have been and continue to be the home of Saint Edelberg Parish. And we so hope that the Landmark Commission considers the landmark designation as its first step towards finding a collaborative approach to protect, preserve, and invest in the beautiful heritage and identity that the 77 neighborhoods of the city of Chicago offers to the city of Chicago. Saint Edelberg and the Pilsen community, we are proud of the diversity that we represent. And as such, we ask the Landmark Commission to consider and respect this heritage with the same respect and dignity that many of our residents are asking for you to consider today. Our immigrant voices have been oftentimes ignored, but most recently dismissed and silenced for way too long. The Landmark Commission today takes a very important step to get us all together, to make sure that we call on every resident of the 25th Ward, that we call on every organization, that we call on the Archdiocese, so that we see the people in this room, so that we hear the people of the city of Chicago that are asking us to be included in the process, to be invested like any other community, and ultimately that we're all proud of an outcome that I know is possible if we all work together here in this room together. The Archdiocese of Chicago is an institution that has been part of our community for a long time. Saint Edelberg is not the only parish in this position. We also understand that there are others. However, we understand that this can be the new beginning. A beginning with the Archdiocese works with us in Landmarking Commission to protect and respect these sacred places that need a history refreshing. And I'm glad for the Landmark Commission to do that today, to remind us why this is so important for our community. These communities have been here for generations and will continue to do so. Because as you see here today, there are many people who perhaps are not here today, but they send hundreds of emails of solidarity and support so that we work in government together to address this issue, not to ignore it and worse, to let it decay in despair and to lose yet another historic heritage for our community. We cannot do that. We understand the importance of this side because we understand the value of people. The value of our history is the value of our communities who have become generation after generation with solidarity and care, always uplifting each other, no separateness. This is a special message also to the Saint Paul parishioners. We're not your enemy. We are your friend. We are your brother and sister. We are neighbors, and we care and love our neighbors. What we want is a solution that can bring us all to the table and not divide us any longer. Given the complexities and the needs that we have, we believe strongly that Landmarking Saint Edelberg takes us a step closer to be the sanctuary city that we profess to be and that we all want to be. And let me just end with this call. Again, this is just the beginning, but I want to measure the temper, the expectations. We are not here to fight each other. We're here to listen to one another. The politics of all has separated us for way too long. And this is a time, this is a time for our community to come as neighbors and to bring forward a solution. This is just the beginning, and another's anger and desperation. But these, I tell you, this is the first and honest first step that I've seen in many years. Let us all come together. Let us all respect and love our neighbors. And let us all discuss today with the Landmark Commission what is possible when we come together. Thank you so much for being here, and let's work together, as we said in our community. Si se puede. Si se puede.
Thank you, Alderman Sichio Lopez. Does the commission have any questions of Alderman Sichio Lopez? Seeing none, I'm going to open the floor up for public comments. What I'd like to do, and I want to remind you of your three minutes, I'd also like to remind you, other people have said the same thing. You don't have to repeat it. But you can acknowledge that you're either support or, uh, or oppose opposition to the project. I'm going to call five names up if you could line up to the microphone up here. Mark Kiglansky, as well as Carolina Kiglansky, Joseph Gottfried, Mary Lou Seidel, Rodak, can't read this. Joseph Godfrey, Mary Lou Seidel, Rodak, can't read this. Located in Tinley Park. I'm sorry. Okay. You could line up. Okay. Mark, go ahead. Your time.
Distinguished Commission on Chicago Landmarks, my name is Dr., Distinguished Commission on Chicago Landmarks, my name is Dr. Mark Kielansky. I would like to thank you for serving the citizens of the city of Chicago to define the identity of this great city. Let me make three points why St. Adelbert Church in Pilsen should be granted preliminary landmark status. Point one, in 2006, Pilsen became National Historic Register District. It would be logical to look for Chicago landmarks in Pilsen. How many landmarks could you found there? Now would be the time to remedy this illogicality. Point two, among 380 Chicago landmarks, several churches of various denominations were granted Chicago landmark status. However, it is hard to find a Catholic church on the list of Chicago landmarks. In Chicago, 33% of people consider themselves as Catholics. Wouldn't be a time one of their churches obtains a Chicago landmark status. Again, we are talking about equity and equality. Point three, Polish Americans now made up 6.7% of Chicago population and number at 182,000. There are 670,000 Mexican immigrants in Chicago, and they constitute 25.8% of Chicago population. Those were historically most underprivileged groups. Please help those groups to maintain their Catholic identities and honor their church, St. Adelbert's Church. I wish you a good productive deliberation. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Karolina?
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Karolina Kielansky, and I'm a historian of press and literature specializing in the late 19th and early 20th century American Polonia. I would like to briefly provide the Commission on Chicago Landmarks with a few historical facts for consideration in making the decision regarding St. Adelbert's Church in Chicago, one of the oldest Polish churches in the United States, built in 1912, and the one that served the third oldest Polish parish in the city, established in early 1870s. In our times of self-professed equality and equity, it is important to note that this magnificent edifice was founded and built not only by minority group, but by one of the poorest minorities in the United States, by people living in slums, by workers earning much less than African-Americans, who are commonly and mistakenly believed to have been at the bottom of the earning ladder. A Winona-based 19th century Polish-American newspaper, The Viarus, in the year 1887 called the situation of the Polish workers, quote, "a modern slavery," end quote, "one that is not much different from, quote, 'the ancient slavery,'" end quote. Scholars confirmed this opinion with historian Frank Ranciewicz concluding that Polish workers felt themselves so victimized that, quote, "they called themselves interior, quote, 'white negroes,'" end interior quote. They were called this way also by others, end quote. These were not illegal immigrants, mind you, because America's borders were open at that time, and immigration was encouraged to populate this beautiful land and to strengthen its growing industry. Nonetheless, despite the heart-ranging experiences and through many sacrifices, much fortitude and perseverance, by means of incredible frugality and strong spirit, the Poles erected wonderful works of architecture, such as St. Adelbert's Church, as well as others, for example, St. John Cantu's Church, which, according to Chicago Tribune, was, quote, "threatened with the wrecking ball in 1988," end quote. Yet recently, in 2016, was voted the most beautiful church in the whole United States. Many Poles in the 19th century America, like the Irish and Germans before them, fought hard to keep the ownership of their churches and not sign them off to their bishops, a phenomenon for which scholars coined the term "trustism." However, such claims were rejected as early as 1829, during the First Provincial Council of Baltimore, a decision also upheld in subsequent councils. In result, the Poles who founded their churches had to give up all rights to them, or else these buildings would not have been consecrated by the church hierarchy. May I please, two more sentences?
No. Joseph Godfrey?
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Godfrey. I graduated from Santa Delbert's in 1971. I'm here today to show my support for the commission's preliminary landmark recommendation for Santa Delbert Church. This beautiful church was founded by the Catholic, Polish Catholic community, has been an icon in the Pilsen neighborhood for the Polish community for over 100 years. Founded in 1874, the church and the other buildings on the campus were a focal point for generations of Polish immigrants and their American-born children and grandchildren. For any of you who has not been in the church, I can tell you that the interior design is modeled after the Papal Basilica of St. Paul in Rome. You are in a state of awe when you walk into the room, to the church, for the first time. The 185-foot towers can be seen from blocks away. The nave, granite columns, marble altar rails, and apse where the altar is are breathtaking. Our family life revolved around Santa Delbert Church. Attending mass and going to grammar school there were a big part of my childhood and one I will always remember. I also have a cousin who was ordained a priest at Santa Delbert's Church. This historic building, which is a gem for the Pilsen residents and the entire city of Chicago, should not be demolished. Today, I ask this commission to give Santa Delbert the landmark designation it deserves. Thank you.
Mary Lou Seidel?
Thank you. My name is Mary Lou Seidel. I'm the Director of Community Engagement at Preservation Chicago, and I stand here before you in absolute support of Landmarking St. Adelbert. Alderman Byron Sigcha Lopez has been working on this tirelessly. I have had the honor of working with both the Polish and the Mexican and some Puerto Ricans in the community in support of St. Adelbert, and I just, we're so grateful that this is here. We are so grateful that this nomination was put together. We thank you for your consideration. The last thing I want to say is, if anybody signed up to speak from St. Paul's or in opposition of St. Adelbert, I urge everyone to please be respectful and give them their time and space. We're going to win this. They can have their space to speak to. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Rodak?
Good afternoon. My name is Andrzej Pientowski. I am Chicago Public School teacher for many years, and I would like to add a couple words to what was said before. First of all, there is no doubt about architectural value of this object, an entire half-block around it. But as a teacher, I would like to address two issues. Social and educational value of this compound. City of Chicago is spending millions of dollars fighting drugs, street crime, teachers, students, or children who are on the streets, and we should be educating them, and this is a perfect place to expand our education. So kids will be going to school, not to streets of Chicago. And the second one is, as we have seen on this beautiful slide, value, value for tourism. If landmark means to me something, what I have to see. There are millions of tourists coming to Chicago every year, and this should be on the map of Chicago for them for years to come to visit. Also, as I look backwards, this church, this structure, entire compound, was founded by Polish immigrants who came here in one pair of shoes with one little bundle in hand. They were our forefathers, and they were scraping last scent to found this beautiful structure. So I believe that it belongs to us, to Polish-American, to Chicago, to Spanish-speaking people. And for the end, Mr. Alderman, señor, muchisima gracias por involucrarse en este asunto tan importante para todos nosotros. Muchas gracias.
Next five speakers, Dana McDermott, somebody Dobrowska Hipman, Jen Trace, Michael Niedzinski, Mary Gonzalez. Dana McDermott, please. Dana McDermott. I can't read this. Somebody, the last name is Dobrowska Hipner? Jen Yan Trace? T-R-A-C-Z? Michael Niedzinski? Niedzinski? Huh? Tracy? Trace, okay. And Mary Gonzalez.
Good morning. My name is Mary Gonzalez. I'm a resident of Pilsen since 1958, and I had the privilege of knowing Santa Delbert when it was a very large Polish community. I've stayed in that community because I love that community, and I don't want to leave it. And unfortunately, when you leave a place, it changes, and that's what happened here. This, I am at St. Paul Catholic Church. We are responsible for that site. We're the ones that have to maintain it secure. We're the ones that have to worry about anything happening at that site. It is no longer officially a church. It is a building. It's been desanctified as of several years ago, and we too are concerned about it. But I have to tell you that I supported my alderman, and he knows that I did. And he and I worked together on many issues in the neighborhood, and we both agreed. This is the one issue we could not agree on. And I guess what I'm most frustrated about is I live in a community that has had a long list of corrupt politicians come through. Some went to jail, some, you know, you know what happened. You're a city council member. You know the history of the 25th ward. And I can go way back, you know, to 1958 on that history, including when it was the first ward and the mafia, all of that business. And I had hopes that this new alderman, that Byron was going to be a different kind of alderman, and I think he wants to be. But in this case, we have a long history of manipulation on the part of our alderman, and this is the last piece that he's now attempting to do. We will oppose it, and we think we have sufficient evidence, sufficient evidence to show that this is one more political ploy. I had hoped that that type of work had ended with Danny Solis, but it apparently has not. And so, I am on the Finance Committee. I'm very aware of what is happening from St. Paul's point of view. And all we get from the, and I'm glad there's so many people here, but I want to point out to the city council, the overwhelming majority of the people here are not residents of Chicago. I agree with the alderman. There are people living in Chicago, regardless of their race or their faith, should be treated equally. Most of the people sitting in this room do not live in Chicago. And the reason this building is in this crisis it's in is because they left. I'm not going to leave Pilsen. All right? You can disagree with me. You have, you have a, you have a right, you have a right to disagree with me. You have an absolute right to disagree with me. But I can tell you that I'm on the Finance Committee. I'm very aware of what is going on, and we are going to oppose this, and we're going to do whatever we have to do, and I think we have evidence to show that this is a political ploy. Thank you.
Dana McDermott?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Niedzinski. I'm the President of Polish Communist Congress in Ljude Wizn. I'm not going to talk about any political issues here. I'm looking at that from a standpoint of this being a landmark, okay? From architectural standpoint, Henry Schlagz was one of the most prominent architects of the early 20th century. This is, let's see, one of the jewels, let's see, of his intellectual, you know, activity. This essentially was built by Polish community at a cost of $200,000. Somebody mentioned that they were working for slave labor, okay? So this was an effort of a large, well, large but very poor community. The church has been standing there, and it's a jewel of Pilsen, okay? It's almost like you're looking at Water Tower on Michigan Avenue. You're looking, let's see, Bahai Temple in Wilmette, maybe Field Museum, let's say, on the lakefront. Would you tear down these objects because there's a chance to build a new superstructure, high-rise, something like that? In my opinion, let's see, this should be retained as is. Somebody mentioned that some of the glass where the, you know, the stained glass was removed. Every effort should be made to see to bring it back and make sure that it's still part of this building, okay? So...
If you continue, I will clear this, I will clear the chamber.
So I do want to say Alderman Lopez, for his effort, let's say, to retain this landmark, sure that Pilsen remains as a vibrant community, and if there are tourists coming from abroad, beyond going downtown, they should be able to go to Pilsen and look at this beautiful structure. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
I'm here, I'm here to give you tempo of culture, culture in the, in the church. I'd like, can you help me sing the barca? Can you help me sing the barca? Pan, kiedy stanął na brzegie, szukał ludzi gotowych poźdanim. Było mi czerca stów bożych prawdą. O panie, to ty na mnie spojrzałeś, twoje usta dziś wyrzekły me imię. Twoją barkę pozostawiam na brzegu razem z tobą. Nowy zacznę dziś łuk. Jestem ubogim człowiekiem, moim skarbenstwem gotowe do pracy z tobą i czyste strzece. O panie, to ty na mnie spojrzałeś, twoje usta dziś wyrzekły me imię. Twoją barkę pozostawiam na brzegu razem z tobą. Nowy zacznę dziś łuk. O panie, to ty na mnie spojrzałeś, twoje usta dziś wyrzekły me imię. Twoją barkę pozostawiam na brzegu razem z tobą. Nowy zacznę dziś łuk. Thank you.
Next five speakers. Branslow, Solowski, Lucinda Solowski, Anna Leha, Julie Sawisky, Ward Miller, Branslow, Solowski... Branslow, Solowski, Lucinda Solowski, Anna Leha, Julie Sawiski, and Ward Miller. Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Wutia Mirowska Kopek. I represent the Alliance of Polish Clubs in the United States of America. We are a charitable, not-for-profit organization that was established over 95 years ago, which supports culture, tradition, and education. We care about the cultural panorama of the beautiful and the beauty of the city we love, Chicago. We support landmarks of our culture and religion. One of those is Saint Adalbert Church. It was founded in 1874 to serve the needs of Chicago's Poles. The smothered church of all the later Polish parishes on the west and south sides served many Hispanics, many Hispanics of the Pilsen neighborhood and had masses involved, Polish language as well as Spanish. The Italian Renaissance Church with its two towers and copper domes was molded after Saint Paul's Basilica in Rome. This church is truly a city treasure, a real landmark. Famous landmarks attract people from all over the world and draw their attention to learn more about the culture and connections to its past. In the context of the city as a whole, it is important to emphasize the need for aged buildings. Cities need old buildings so badly, it is probably impossible for vigorous streets and districts to grow without them. The unique story of a city is increased because of the existence of historic structures that have continuously occupied the streets. The sense of charm and sentiment is stripped when historic structure is demolished in preference for a new one. I traveled all over the world, Europe, Asia, South America, and North America, and all continents in all countries, governments take a serious care about their landmarks, which are not only hundreds, but thousands of years old. They even value and care for ruins. Here, we have an important, beautiful church and a historical landmark. There are not too many of those in our city. It is our obligation to keep it and save for the future generations.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and ladies and gentlemen of the Commission on Chicago, Chicago Landmarks. My, my name is Anna Lea, and I am a member of the congregation of Saint Adalbert Church in Pilsen. It is my great hope that today the preliminary landmarking status be granted to this exceptionally beautiful and architecturally magnificent church. Church that was built in the early 1900s by the Polish immigrants whose homeland did not even exist on the maps. Over a century old, this church is significant on several levels to all immigrants who made Pilsen their home. First, its religious importance to the Polish and Latino communities cannot be overstated. Its patron, Saint Adalbert, the first Slavic saint and martyr, is next to the Mother of God, Queen of Poland, the main patron saint of Poland. He is also called the patron saint of the spiritual unity of Europe. In his address to young people in Gniezno in 1979, Gniezno being the first capital and first Catholic metropolis of Poland, Pope John Paul II said, quote, "Preserve Saint Adalbert's heritage of faith, remain faithful to him, and multiply it and pass on to the next generations." End of quote. This is the message that is etched in our minds and hearts. And this is what makes it so important to us to preserve this church. When Mexican and other Latino immigrants came to the Pilsen neighborhood, they made Saint Adalbert Church their place of worship and refuge away from home. This is where they had their baptism, first communions, confirmations, weddings, and funerals. In the city of diverse cultures and awesome architecture of old and modern, Saint Adalbert Church is a real treasure. It is a gift of generations of Polish immigrants to the city of Chicago, a city of immigrants that became our home. In the city so rich in diverse cultures, it is extremely important that we preserve this architectural marvel of exceptional beauty for generations to come. Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks, I implore you to vote in favor of granting the preliminary landmarking status to Saint Adalbert Church. I would also like to add that today's decision will resonate throughout the world as over 20 million people outside Poland and 40 million Poles in Poland are watching this decision very closely. I deeply appreciate the opportunity to express my opinion, and I thank the city council and the CCL.
Thank you. Julie Sawiski.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Wong, and esteemed members of the Landmark Commission. I have to first and foremost thank you for your grace and your patience with us over all these years of attending Landmark Commission meetings and, and speaking with all of you about the importance of Saint Adelbert's to us. And on behalf of the Saint Adelbert's community, which I think you can see stretches to all corners of Chicago and far beyond, we thank you for today. We thank you. I would like to draw your attention to the interior of Saint Adelbert's because I ask myself, I've been to Paris, I've seen the Mona Lisa. Would we landmark just the picture frame of Mona Lisa and not the Mona Lisa itself? If you are visiting Notre Dame, do you walk past the exterior or do you go inside to see the beauty of Notre Dame? The interior art and architecture is equally as important. And I urge all of you to consider landmarking some extremely unique and artistic elements of the church inside. You've heard about the art glass windows. Some have been removed this week. I'm not sure if it was done with or without a permit. Our pieta, as you probably already know, last year was removed unceremoniously. There is a lot more valuable art and beauty inside that also needs our protection and your vote today. As an example, there is a high pulpit in the church made of white marble. Imagine the amount of time it took a craftsman to chisel out this, this magnificent pulpit with the four evangelists on each corner and the prophets in the center. The Tiffany stained glass half dome over the altar. So this church has, is exemplary of two styles of art glass. The Munich style, which is the exterior windows, but also later Tiffany, who modernized the medieval style of architecture, is exemplary in the Tiffany stained glass half dome over the altar. The altar itself, monolithic, a solid slab of 30 tons of Carrara marble. The pews, the mahogany pews with their curved backs that were designed to match the transepts of the Eastern confessionals, the confessionals on the eastern wall of the church. The interior is exquisite. It is also a work of art in and of itself. In New York, we see a lot of interiors landmarked. We don't see it as much here. And if there was ever a time where such a designation would be necessary, it would be for the interior. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Really?
Good afternoon, Chairman Wong, members of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. I'm Ward Miller, the Richard H. Dreehouse Executive Director of Preservation Chicago. And we're here today to fully support and greatly encourage the Chicago landmark designation of Saint Adalbert Church and campus of buildings. These structures, including the former church, designed in the grand Roman Basilica style, along with the rectory by architect by Henry Schleck's, as well as the convent and school buildings are remarkable. Saint Adalbert's Church is a magnificent edifice with its inspiring 180-foot soaring and massive twin towers, the tallest structures in the Pilsen community. And with its beautifully designed and articulated facade, the former church is a cornerstone of the community and recognized as one, and recognized as one of architect Henry Schleck's finest commissions, along with the nearby St. Paul's Church, also designed by this master of ecclesiastical architecture. Architect Schleck's worked with the Adler and Sullivan firm, Dankmar Adler and Louis Sullivan, one of America's most foremost and influential and recognized partnerships of the late 19th and 20th centuries, creating incredible works of art and architecture. These range from the early skyscrapers and steel frame buildings of Chicago, such structures as the Auditorium Building, once the envy of the world, containing a 4,500-seat opera house, hotel, shops, and an office buildings, office building, all in one structure. The tall tower of the Auditorium Building, which still remains one of Chicago's finest and most recognized landmarks, was also the home of the offices of Adler and Sullivan. And from that office came such notables as Frank Lloyd Wright, George Elmsley, William Drummond, and of course, Henry Schleck's, the architect of Saint Adelbert. We at Preservation Chicago are of the opinion that the former Saint Adelbert's Church and campus meets and exceeds the criterion for designation of the complex as a Chicago landmark, noting its architect, craftsmanship, its cultural and historical importance to both the Polish and Latinx communities of Chicago and to the Pilsen community. We wish to thank the Johnson administration, Commissioner Cox, Diana Cavallo, Dan Kleber, Matt Crawford, and DPD staff, along with all of you, the Commission on Chicago Landmarks, for the special meeting of the commission. We also recognize Alderman Byron Sicho Lopez, former members of the Saint Adalbert Community and the community of Pilsen, for their steadfast commitment and unending love for Saint Adalbert's Church over the past nine years and extending over the last 49 years to 1974, when this church was first threatened by closure and demolition. We very much want to see this building and this complex considered for designation. And we'd like to have the commission, if they, their consideration of possible interior elements being saved.
Next five speakers. Please listen closely. Jan Stromalowski, Richard Smaglik, Danuda Erla, Edward Karecki, Bonnie McDonald.
Hello, everyone. First and foremost, I want to extend my gratitude to Alderman Byron Sicho Lopez, to Mayor Johnson, but to every single person that came out here today. The Latino community, the Polish.
State your name, sir. You can state your name, sir.
My name is Dan Pokaszewski. Thank you very much. Can I go on? Excellent. So we just want to state how important it is, and we are uniting in one message. This beautiful edifice, we ask you, please, to landmark the exterior and the interior of this wonderful work of art. Built by the widow's mite, it shows how the working class of Chicago truly, truly made an impact. And in a city where we have demolished beautiful works of architecture from the historic Mecca flats, we all know about Richard Nickel and his tragic fate, who by the way, was also a Polish American. We all unite with one message. This church must be landmarked in the interior and the exterior. We thank you so much for your leadership, and we ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Smaglik. I have a short, I have a short but high-impact statement for you. It's controversial. The stained glass windows are being removed right now in preparation for the church being sold to Dan Davidson. I had a conversation with Cardinal Supich about that on Memorial Day. I stated to him, given Dan Davidson's self-reported sordid use of a former synagogue, can you tell me why the archdiocese hasn't terminated the deal to sell Saint Adalbert's to Davidson? His response was, ah, yeah, I think, ah, all I know is the parish there at St. Paul's has decided to go ahead and do that. This is what Dan Davidson did with a synagogue. It's a simulated orgy that he conducted at his temple house, a former synagogue. Temple steps in the temple house. It's, it's exterior edifice is formed in the shape of the tablets of the Ten Commandments. And this is what the buyer that the archdiocese is selling our Saint Adalbert's to does with sacred spaces. This has to be stopped. This is a profound violation of church law. It's called Canon 212, 1222. It's also a violation, removing these windows of city ordinances on demolition. This happened without a permit. It should have required 90 days. Let that be burned in your brain. That church shouldn't have this in it. And Cardinal Supich should not be allowing it. Dan Davidson, a new LLC. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Bonnie McDonald, and I am the president and CEO of Landmarks Illinois, the statewide historic preservation nonprofit organization that has been operating here in Chicago since 1971. Now, my organization supports the preliminary landmark designation of Saint Adalbert Parish Complex. Thank you. And we urge the commission to vote in favor of that designation today. In 2016, Landmarks Illinois placed Saint Adalbert and Chicago's historic Catholic churches on our annual list of the most endangered historic places in Illinois in response to the Archdiocese of Chicago's announcement that it would close these places of worship. Saint Adalbert Church has served as a community anchor for generations, as you can see here. It is already an unofficial spiritual and community landmark in Pilsen and is deserving of official Chicago landmark status to ensure that this building can remain an icon in its neighborhood. We recognize, however, that the Archdiocese of Chicago will no longer maintain Saint Adalbert as an active place of worship. With that in mind, Chicago landmark designation can be a key piece in the strategy to transition the parish complex to a new, active, and complementary serving use, which we believe to be the best of, the best for preservation. Use is always the best preservation. Now, we recognize that accommodating a new use is likely to require creativity, and we urge the commission to move forward with landmark designation with an eye towards flexibility in future review. We also urge that all conversations about the future of these buildings be undertaken with the substantial input of the Pilsen community and the Saint Adalbert parishioners. Sacred places are part of community infrastructure. Chicago is expected to see many, many more Catholic churches and parishes close. And a more proactive strategy is needed for community engagement and to identify reuse opportunities. Now, we at Landmarks Illinois offer our expertise and our partnership to further that broader conversation, I'm sure, along with many in the room. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm sure, along with many in the room. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Hello, my name is Edward Korecki, and I am a resident of Chicago. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. St. Adelbert Church is a historic and architecturally significant church that has been orange rated for 26 years, and yet it is in danger of destruction. In November, the integrity of the church was violated when the beautiful Pieta statue was removed, and now the stained glass windows are being removed. It is time to honor the wishes of the Polish and Mexican immigrant communities and all Catholics and Chicagoans who want to see this beautiful church saved. Please grant landmark status to the interior and exterior of St. Adelbert Church now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next five speakers. Agata Soltis, Bernalet Menturo, Elena Soltis, Gabriel Piamonte, and Sylvia Safran. Agata Soltis. Go ahead. Everybody can announce yourself, please.
Good afternoon. I am Agata Soltis, and I am a Polish scout, a former graduate of a Polish school, Nicholas Kopernikus School, a daughter of Polish immigrants, and also a representative of the Polish youth. I believe it's integral and important to preserve the beautiful architecture, art, tradition, and in culture that exists in the St. Adelbert Church and complex that serves a multitude of communities. And I'd like to show you that we have so many people here to support us today, and I urge you to see that. And thank you for your time, and we ask for your support. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gabriel Piamonte. I'm the co-founder of Save the Shrine. And we're an organization that has another Henry Schlax Church in Woodlawn that the Catholic Church was going to demolish in 2015. We were able to successfully prevent that demolition. Excellent news, as you are as well, I'm sure, going to have a successful preservation project as we did. We were able to successfully raise enough money that the exterior of that church is now perfectly preserved. This is a beautiful room. This is, this is incredible that you've been able to come out here. I congratulate all of you. I want to say, you know, landmarking came at a time for the, for the shrine when it was also desanctified. So these are really important moments when you can really make a big difference. We were also able to persuade the Catholic Church to transfer title to responsible stewards. And when I look around this room, that's what I see. I see a community that can do that. Critically, you also have the support of a really outstanding Alderman. It's a rarity, and take advantage of that. I applaud you, Alderman. Thank you so much for your support. I just want to thank all of you, because every one of these buildings is a piece of the beating heart of this city, and you're, you're doing the work really that makes the city as wonderful as it is. Thanks so much.
My name is Sylvia Safran, and I'm here to demand that the church of mine would never be called a building. That's not building. That's a church for me and for my people. Where we kneel, where we go. I took lots of my students as a teacher of Polish school for first communion, for graduation masses, for many events. And you, some of you have the guts to call this building. If you, I'm not going to repeat how important the church is for us, because most of my people already expressed the opinion. If you want to destroy the church, you have to buy a machine gun and kill me on the steps of the church, because I'm going to be there with spread of my arms and wings. And I'm not going to allow you to come over my dead body if you destroy my church. I am not asking you permission. I am demanding to keep my church as an example of beautiful architect. Also, my grand, grand, grandfather was building the church, and you have the guts. My grandpa didn't eat. He has one pair of shoes, but he was there, and you want to destroy this? What kind of heart you people have? So wait for me on the steps and kill me before I'll give up the church.
Before I go on to the next five, I do want to remind you that we have probably another 30 to 40 people who have signed up to speak at three minutes apiece. If you are on record, if you are either in favor of the project or opposed to the project, so I'm going to ask you to try to keep your comments as short as possible. The next five speakers. Michael Winters, Anina Jacobowski, Lujia Mirskopec, Irene Moskow, and Max Chavez.
Hello, my name is Michael Winters, and I recently became a volunteer with Preservation Chicago. When I heard about the preservation effort for St. Adelbert, I immediately dove into research, but, and I recognized it from the times I've been to Pilsen for cultural and musical events. Pilsen is one of the most vibrant neighborhoods in Chicago to me. I've been to drum circles, protests, and concerts there. I believe the culture is alive there because of the preservation of the community, the efforts against gentrification, against demolition. As for St. Adelbert itself, it is a prominent building not only for the Pilsen community, but in Chicago history, being featured in no less than seven architectural books. The architect Henry J. Schlax, as was mentioned, trained with Adler and Sullivan, a firm that worked on the World Colombian Exposition in 1893. As an ecclesiarist, Schlax's expertise was in designing churches, which are all around Chicago and its suburbs to this day. However, only two are well-known enough to have their own Wikipedia page, and only, of the two, only one has multiple paragraphs, St. Adelbert. St. Adelbert is Schlax's most famous building, and I believe that tearing it down would be an insult to the memory of one of Chicago's finest architects. I've read about the members of the Pilsen community protesting the demolition of St. Adelbert's day and night, and I know it is of no surprise to anyone here that this church has always been culturally significant. I've traveled across Europe, and I've been in many Catholic cathedrals, not because I'm Catholic, which I'm not, but just to see the architecture, because that's how stunning this style of architecture is. Compared to the cathedrals in Europe, St. Adelbert holds up. To have a building that is as beautiful and grand as centuries-old cathedrals in Europe right here in our city of Chicago is a gift, and I don't think we should waste it. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name is Anina Jacobowski, and I am a product of that church, of that school. My entire family went there. And I'll keep this short and simple. Wake up! What are you waiting for? We need to save this. This is a gift to the people of Chicago besides the community here. The diocese has neglected it in the past years, and it's a shame. That's why we're here. We need your help in preserving something. This was built as a house of God by people for people. Supich, Cardinal Supich, can say what he wants, that this belongs to him, but we all know this belongs to the people of the Chicago area. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you, okay, great. This is Max Chavez. I'm Director of Research and Special Projects at Preservation Chicago. Like pretty much everybody else here, I am enthusiastically supportive of landmarking St. Adelbert. Its importance is multifaceted, of course, but I really just want to speak to the architectural significance a little bit more. Henry Schlax, admittedly, he may not be venerated in the same breath as Adler and Sullivan or Frank Lloyd Wright, but it's a shame, because his impact is arguably just as undeniable. While many of his most iconic designs are still standing, many are not. Most recently, the demolition of his Cassidy Tire Building, an uncommon industrial design by Schlax, further signaled that his architecture, despite its high pedigree, was not safe from demolition. This church is one of his masterworks, undeniably, and it represents the architect at his most divine and majestic. There's a real airiness and grandeur to the building that I think a lot of people here could speak to as well. And it captures how talented Schlax was at bringing a vision of heaven to earth. And so it's no wonder that he became the favorite and essentially the de facto architect for the Archdiocese during the early part of the 20th century. And it's in the small details that Schlax really brings out the building's finest moments of beauty. There's a story that I really love about Schlax and then Reverend Gronkowski traveling to Italy together to choose the marble that would soon make up the church's altar. As it goes, and admittedly, it's possibly apocryphal, but the marble was taken from the same quarry where Michelangelo would pull the marble that he used to sculpt his masterpieces during the Renaissance. And I love that. I think it's amazing really, when you think about it. And meanwhile, Schlax employed stained glass by German artist FX Zettler throughout the church. Zettler was regarded as one of the finest stained glass artists of his time, and he became famous after winning a first-place prize over Louis Comfort Tiffany of all people at the 1893 World's Fair in a stained glass design competition. So when we talk about the possibility of losing a building like St. Adelbert, we're contending with not just the loss of a community space and a quality piece of architecture, but also obliterating all of these smaller artworks throughout the building. Many of them are museum quality in their own right. And are we a city that is going to be content with destroying its own artistic heritage? I'd like to think we aren't, but things at St. Adelbert have become dire. The removal of its stained glass windows, the relocation of La Pieta, crafted from a cast of the original La Pieta itself. All of these are a slow death by a thousand cuts. The landmarking of the church and its structures is absolutely essential to protecting this monumental neighborhood landmark. It's hard to think of too many other sites here in Chicago that are so tremendously deserving of landmark status for both its architecture and its architect alone. So we must protect it today. Thank you so much for your time.
I hope you can all hear me. My name is Irene Moskow Delgaitis, and I came from a fighting family for churches. Julie introduced me to Byron about three or four years ago, and it was always about St. Adelbert. She knew that my brother fought hard for St. John Canchus, which is my church too. I go to many Polish churches, and I only go to Polish churches. My husband was Italian. He always wondered why. He said, "I don't understand them." I said, "Too bad. Sit down and say the Hail Mary." So we had a great companionship. But my brother was livid when he found out about St. John Canchus. And you people should be livid to find out what's going on at this church too. You get one chance to fight for this church. Do it. Be brave. We Polish people have taken backstands too long. It's now that we speak up and fight for what we believe in. I maybe don't live here, but I'd be glad to parade with everybody else. I would be proud. So I thank you Polish people for fighting for Adelbert's. I thank Julie for introducing me to Byron. Four years of going to the meetings, it was worth it. It was worth it. Except I'm not a good driver, so I should have got a couple of tickets on the way here. So I want to thank you again from the bottom of my heart. I prayed to my brother this morning that he would give me the right words. And I guess he didn't do a good job. But anyway, thank you all, you wonderful Polish people. I love you all for coming out.
If I can just mention, Irene is the former president of the Polish American Congress. Her brother is, was the, God rest his soul, was former president of the Polish National Alliance. And he, along with the cardinal at that time, moved heaven and earth to save St. John Canchus. Irene also is a former trustee of the Triton College Board, and she's also a vice president of the Society of St. Adelbert's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next five speakers. Anastasia Girsban, Dahlia Rodecky, Rosemary Dominguez, Marcelina Munoz, and Rosa Abenas.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dahlia Rodecky, and I have lived behind St. Adelbert's Church on 16th Street for 30 years. I raised my family here. St. Adelbert has been at the center of our community for over 100 years. Most people anywhere in this city cannot boast of beautiful and historic church and property. We must cherish the sites, take care of them, as they contribute to the unique character of our city and represent a rich history of culture and faith. It is not just the exteriors of the church and surrounding buildings, the extraordinary work of so many immigrant artists and craftsmen over a century ago must be respected and protected. I am in favor of landmarking all of the buildings of St. Adelbert's, both inside and outside. Please do allow any further destruction of the Pearl of Pilsen. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosemary Dominguez. I'm a Chicago resident. I can honestly say that I am a resident through association in Pilsen all my life. My activism, my community engagement began with this church. My father and my mother, my father served as a deacon, and they were very critical figures in the community. Apart from preserving this as landmark status, this means more. This is about preserving our home. I am not going to apologize for being emotional, because this has been a longstanding fight for over seven years. I sit on the board of the Preservation for St. Adelbert. This has been such an emotional roller coaster. And regardless of what was stated about the, the pearl choice and my immigration patterns that we've seen in the past, this has been a gift from the Polish community that the, that the Mexican, that the Latino community has worked on preserving. And I would, I would like to encourage you all as a commission to go beyond thinking about preserving this as just, you know, a building. Yes, it has, has, I'm sorry, the church, and the entire five-property complex, because this is what this really is. This is about preserving my home. Regardless of the fact, we have tried with the Archdiocese. We've had, don't, we've had offered money from those who have donated, and the fact that we would continue to get denied access to sit at the table for this to be proposed, to be presented today, is truly a miracle, because this is the last bit of hope that we have been fighting for. And so, Konze Halcichow, you have been tremendous in this effort as well. Thank you to the Johnson Administration for allowing us to have this platform today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Landmarking Commission and City Council. My name is Anastasia Girsban. I represent Polish community, and our community is wondering why St. Adelbert Church, Rectory, and Convent have not been landmarked yet. In October 2020, Commissioner Maurice Cox said he would move forward with landmarking St. Adelbert in spring 2021. It still has not happened. St. Adelbert Church is like museum. It was talked already about the values inside and outside. We have a Tiffany dome over the altar. Historic murals inside, probably the first murals in Pilsen. We have exact replica of Michelangelo's Pieta. We have exact replica of Michelangelo's Pietà stolen by this other church. And also, this church is part of our Polish immigrant history and heritage. It also part of the history of Mexican immigrants who moved to this area and became part of St. Adalbert community by their baptism, weddings, and funerals. We have been asking for landmark protection inside and outside for over two years already. We are taxpayers, taxpayers, not archdiocese of Chicago. Our church is asset to the city of Chicago, and it should be treated as such. Around the world, churches stands for ages, and they attract visitors from around the world. And my ancestors worked very hard in this country. And they built this beautiful church in Chicago. My Polish ancestors did that sacrifice so much to see their church demolished or changed into a apartment building or even sleaze palace. Honorable members of this Landmarking Commission and Commissioner Cox, I am asking you to finally recognize this extraordinary church must be saved and that you proceed today with preliminary landmarking. Thank you, all of you and everyone of you. Thank you.
I'm Marcelina Munoz.
The microphone, please.
Ah, si. Ahí. Okay. Este voy a hablar en español porque soy muy poco inglés. Y aquí en esta iglesia es una iglesia muy linda que nos dejaron nuestros pasados y no, no me gustaría que la destruyan. Ahí crecieron mis hijos y mis nietos. Ahí crecieron, hicieron su primera comunión. Y cuando la iban a cerrar, me dicen, mis nietos, grandma, ¿y ahora a dónde? Y luego yo le digo, vamos a buscar. Y yo le digo, ¿qué te parece esta iglesia? No, no me gusta. Y les digo de otra, ¿cómo te parece esta iglesia? No, no me gusta. Y ellos están, mis nietos, que quieren esta iglesia y quieren la iglesia abierta. Gracias.
Thank you. The next five speakers are Jen Kopeck.
May I translate for her to the commission? Is it okay if I just translate for her? She has grown up in Santa Delbert's Church and has raised all of her children and grandchildren in the church. And when her grandchildren saw that the church was closing, they asked her, Grandma, what now? Where do we go now? And so she tried to find them other churches to attend, and they would always say, no, Grandma, this is in Santa Delbert's, no Grandma. And she is begging you to save this and preserve this for future generations.
Y me siento bien mal, me siento bien mal porque no van a ninguna iglesia. Ellos quieren mi vida abierta.
And she feels very bad because her grandchildren and children refuse to go to any other church but Santa Delbert's. She feels very bad about this.
Thank you, Jen. Next five speakers are Jen Kopeck, Andrew Tokars, David Heller, Paul Bogorski, Adam Natention. Good answer.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Tokars, and I represent the Tatra Mountain Cultural Foundation. We're a cultural foundation 501(c)(3) that represents immigrants from the southern part of Poland. And we are here to, in favor of designation of the historical landmark status. The reason is that many of our forefathers came to America. They worked five to six days in the Union Stockyards, and on the seventh day, they prayed at St. Adalbert's. And no one can really doubt the historical impact of the Union Stockyards on the history of Chicago. Where you go throughout the world, people correlate the fact that Chicago had a huge agro-industrial complex at the beginning of the previous century. And it was known as Packing Town, and waves of generations of immigrants came and worked in the stockyards and prayed at St. Adalbert's. Now, even though these stockyards no longer exist, to this very day, Chicago officially celebrates that area as part of its cultural and working history. As a matter of fact, there is even a museum called Packing Town, which documents these waves of immigrants that came and worked and built up Chicago by working in that Union Stockyard complex. The reason I point this out is because precedence has been set because already that part of Chicago has a historical reputation. You can, there is a nucleus there that you can build upon and say that the Union Stockyards is where the people worked and St. Adalbert's is the place where people worshiped. If you create or expand this historical district, including St. Adalbert, it creates synergy. And bigger projects should mean easier funding, which means more money, jobs, interactive exhibits, and increasing the tourism appeal of Chicago. All of this will make Chicago an even more attractive place. And St. Adalbert's, as part of this jewel, will be an intrinsic part of the history of Chicago when taken in whole. You have something already there that you can rely on. Thank you.
Adam.
Hello, my name is Adam Natention. I'm the Director of Operations for Preservation Chicago. It's always an honor to address the Commission on Chicago Landmarks, but it's, I want to just pause in my remarks and recognize how humbled and honored I am to be here today to experience this meeting, this special meeting, the incredible outpouring of support, heartfelt, wrenching, powerful. It's an extraordinary thing to feel tangibly this. And so I, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's here, who's given me this opportunity to feel this way about this building. Like my colleagues and all of the many who are here, I'm here to speak in support of the proposed preliminary landmark recommendation of the former St. Adalbert Roman Catholic Church located at 1636 West 17th Street and the adjoining rectory at 1646 West 17th Street. St. Adalbert was designed by celebrated ecclesiastic architect Henry Schlecks in the Renaissance style in 1912. He studied the finest European cathedrals and used their models to inform and inspire his designs. Widely recognized as a master of church design, his efforts helped American church construction, specifically Chicago church construction, to rival those in Europe. St. Adalbert has been a beloved centerpiece of the Pilsen community since it was constructed in 1912. It was cherished because of its beauty and elegance, but its value to the community was far deeper than just architectural beauty. The construction of St. Adalbert was a monumental process, and its monumental cost was paid for by the immigrant community that lived, worked, played, and prayed in Pilsen. But together, their nickels and dimes allowed the walls to rise and topped by the pair of soaring towers. St. Adalbert became a tangible representation of the soul of Pilsen. It was a crowning achievement and a source of well-deserved pride for the community. It embodied hopes, dreams, and a belief in a better future. St. Adalbert was more than just the heart of the faith community. It also served as a primary community institution. It was a source of community building, and it provided a wide range of social services, including hunger relief, housing services, immigrant settlement, women's and children's services, and so much more at a time before the New Deal, when the government was largely absent and the nonprofit sector was tiny by comparison to today. The legacy of St. Adalbert can and should continue today. Clearly, there is a powerful, robust faith community that would like to see St. Adalbert continue to serve as the beloved church that it is. Additionally, Chicago was experiencing many social crises, including hunger, homelessness, mental health services, and need for immigrant settlement. St. Adalbert can and should continue to play a central role in addressing these challenges. Thank you very much for all of your support today.
The next five speakers. Alexander Danelle, Simon Cosio, Blanca Torres, Carlos Perez, Bridget McBride.
The Catholic Church, oh, my name is Alexander Danelle. I am a resident of Chicago. I have been all my life. And I do vote here. The Catholic Church cannot, as it claims to have done, de-consecrate this church. The archdiocese cannot de-consecrate or desanctify this place because it was blessed not just with some water sprinkled by a priest, but the waters that blessed this place, that consecrated this place, were the sweat and the tears of the people who worked, toiled, and their bodies broken, but donated the few pennies, nickels, and dimes that they could to help build this church. The sweat and the tears of the craftsmen who put their work into this. The craftsmanship of this place is exquisite. And if you ask, how much would it cost to build a place like this today? You couldn't because the heart of the people who built it is present in the walls and every little detail. And the craftsmen like this don't exist anymore. It can't be de-consecrated or desanctified. It was built for, it was built to be a gift, a treasure given to future generations. And to just, I mean, if a Russian missile hit a church like this in Ukraine, we'd say it's a crime against humanity. The archdiocese, because it's culture and because it's a treasure for future generations, you can't desanctify this place. We respect Native Americans when they have a mountain or a valley or something vast that has almost no population in it. And yet they say it is a sacred place, and a billion-dollar project can't go through it. This place has seen, Sunday after Sunday, thousands of people gathering and worshiping. And they built it, they worshiped in it. It is for us, and we should treasure it. I am in favor of landmark status, and I give my thanks to the commission for hearing me.
Bravo, bravo. Thank you for that.
Honoring commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sherman Youssef Kojow. I'm a student at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, majoring in political science, minoring in history. I'm also an intern for Senator Robert Mockers' office for the 10th District of Illinois. But today, I stand in front of you not only as a student, as a Pole and as a Catholic, but first and foremost, as a citizen, a citizen who cares deeply about the best interests of his fellow citizens in this community. And what is best for this community is the preservation of this cultural landmark, St. Adalbert's. St. Adalbert, like many churches in the Chicagoland area, serve and still serve as strong pillars within their community. The removal of this pillar that is St. Adalbert's is a destruction of the Pilsen community. On August 1st, Poland celebrated the 79th anniversary of the Warsaw uprising. For those who don't know, the Warsaw uprising was a military conflict which resulted in the deaths of hundreds and thousands of people within Poland's capital, Warsaw, Varšava. It also resulted in the near total destruction of Poland's cultural heritage by the Nazi Germans. We, the citizens of Illinois, the city of Chicago, will not stand idly by and allow our heritage to be destroyed, not like it was in Warsaw in 1944 and not here as it is with St. Adalbert's. I'll end quickly with this. The full translation of the title of the country of Poland is Żeż pośpolita Polska. Żeż pośpolita can be broke down into two words. The first word is Żeż, meaning thing, and the second word is pośpolita, meaning common. St. Adalbert's is our Żeż pośpolita. It's our common thing, and we do not agree with its destruction. Thank you, dziękuję.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, first and foremost. My name is Blanca Torres, and I'm a longtime parishioner of Santa Delbert, and I live one and a half blocks away from this property. I am also part of the St. Adalbert Preservation Society. A nonprofit started to make certain the parishioners of St. Adalbert had a voice in what happened in their church. We have sought to keep our church open through these last seven years, when the effort to consolidate the churches started in Pilsen back in 2016. Whatever happens at this property is of paramount importance to the efforts to keep our community vital, engaged, and diverse. To be in a society, we need to hear from all sides concern. The landmarking of this property will be a huge factor to make certain that our efforts go forward. The landmarking of this, we have in intervening years garnered much support, not only from current parishioners and community members, but from former parishioners and students and others who are interested in helping maintain structures that support and foster overall community enrichment with their beauty and resiliency, because that's what St. Adalbert has. We have over signatures. I have signatures here from our change.org. And we have many more as well. And especially in these times of difficulty, we need to have positive and reinforcing anchors to the community, places of refuge and education. We need to have places that help in the process of community building and not tearing down, not tearing down. This is vitally important in a community like Pilsen, who has a crucible of their history at the crossroads of how to have a neighborhood be fully participatory to new and old generations alike. I stand as a representative of the greater family of the St. Adalbert community, who put all in their church. We went to school here. I went to school there. We took our moral and spiritual foundations here. We got married there. We had our funerals there. And we were all part of a community who supported and encouraged each other in this magnificent edifice. My parents were such people, and they worked hard to help their parish to build a community. So we just want to make certain that this goes forward. And it's an ongoing effort. One of my first memories of my existence was being in my father's arms in this church. He is now passed, as so many others who work for this community, but they would want to keep us and this place in the heart of Pilsen going on forever for future generations to come, in whatever the community decides. But we need to keep this place and edifice and all its beauty in there, in our community, for the greater good of all Chicago. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, all commissioners, chairman. Special recognition to Alderman Byron Central Lopez for your efforts and your support for our community, including our Commissioner Metropolitan Water Reclamation, Dan Bogorski. Thank you all. But most, most important, this recognition, I am Carlos Perez. But most important goes to, I would like to recognize all of the community. Regardless of where our beginning started, it's the communities and what we built into this church. This church signifies unity, as you can see here, diversity, not just because you live down the street, because of your faith. Our faith is what brings us to this church. When my parents migrated to the United States in the late 70s, we soon followed, and we ended up in what's now known as University Village. We resided half a block from St. Francis of Assisi Church, which is on Roosevelt between Halsted and Newberry. 1307 South Newberry is where we raised my parents. Twelve kids. I am four of 12. And where are you going to go in a community that is so segregated and away from a Latino community, a Mexican community? To the nearest church, half a block. My oldest blessed sister was the secretary, my mom was the cook for the priest, we were all altar service. And how can we not get involved to the Via Crucis, the Way of the Cross in Pilsen? We were the other church with all the Pilsen community churches that we would come every week and get together and build the stages of the Cross. My father was a soldier, my older brother Marcial was a soldier. I, my brother Joe, Jesse, and myself, we were the three little boys that carried the ladder. We carried the nails and the hammer. At the time, we found sandals. Where are you going to find sandals in March, right? Not very common, not in Chicago at least. I was the little boy holding the nails at that time, in the early 80s. Unfortunately, we could not find sandals my size, so I was barefooted. And it was a lesson to me from my parents, not because we couldn't afford it or find, I could have worn gym shoes. But as my father says, it's a sacrifice that you're going to give to the Lord and it will repay later. I am blessed to be here today, ladies and gentlemen, community, and I am proud. I am very proud to say, this church here gave us so much. At the end of the procession, the body would lay at the altar. And that signifies unity and the sacrifice. So please, make that vote and give us the church back. All of us, let's say, please, that prayer, yes, we can.
Did you, I will clear the next five speakers, Teresa Semenska, Elizabeth Sklarz, Alexandre Ficus, can read the first name on this one, Ble Darts, on Oakley Boulevard, and Grace Bistic. Teresa Semenska, Elizabeth Sklarz, Alexandre Ficus, Something, Ble Garts, and Grace Bistic. Go ahead, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Landmark Commission, my name is Krzysztof Zoltek. I wanted to thank all the emotional, passionate voices of my previous speakers. I am here as a representative of the Polish Highlanders Alliance of North America. We are, thank you. We are a 95-year-old organization representing the Polish diaspora that toiled in the steel mills and the slaughterhouses of Chicago and who put their hard work, their blood and toil into building, helping to build the Saint Adalbert's Church. And 95 years ago, our people decided to create this 95-year-old organization at Saint Adalbert's. So that is the church where our founding members started our 95-year-old organization. Right now, we're located in Archer Heights at 4808 South Archer. We moved a little bit south of here. But this is one of the remaining places that keeps an attachment for our members to Chicago. As you guys know, a lot of folks are moving to the suburbs. But we want to make sure that this architectural, spiritual pearl of Chicago is an attachment to our people so that we are connected even more strongly and we preserve our history here in Chicago. So I wanted to be, keep a short voice because I know there's more folks, but I wanted to make sure that the social, historical significance of this church is also understood and remembered. Thank you so much.
Five, Lucy Oscepec, Josephine Pitzkar, Alicia Sidak, Jacob Kubus, Chris Zoltek, Andrzej Pietowski. Okay. That is all who have signed up to speak on this item. There are no more names. Is there any further discussion on the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Tolliver.
This is a secular building now that it has buildings, now that they have been de-consecrated, the altar that is. Does this resolution designate this as a historical landmark in perpetuity? And I ask that for the reason if a developer is not found within a particular timeframe, is this landmark facility designated in perpetuity as a landmark to stand there undeveloped?
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, should you, should you and the City Council and the mayor pass a landmark designation for this complex of four buildings? That is understood to be a perpetual designation. There's only been one case in the history of the city of Chicago where a landmark building was de-designated. That was a building at Block 37 that was designated as a Chicago landmark. And during the redevelopment of that site, that particular building was de-designated. And it would go through the same process back to the commission, back to City Council, and back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Seeing done, I'd like to request a motion to adopt the preliminary landmark recommendation for the Saint Adalbert Parish Complex. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
So moved by Commissioner Byrne, second by Commissioner Poncze. I'm going to do the roll call. Commissioner Jekowitz. Commissioner Cox. If you want to hold your applause, please. Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Hughes. There was a yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolliver. And I am a yes, the motion carries unanimously. Let the record show. There being no further business, I'd like to request a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a motion? And second, all in favor say aye.